Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, November 23rd, 2009. It's on or about slightly past 7:00 PM. And this evening, City Council is going to be meeting in a series of committee meetings, starting at first with Committee of the Whole. There was a statement made by our Law Director at last meeting regarding the news article showing the surveillance cameras that had been placed at the intersections of Court and several other streets, I believe. And I, the Law Director felt that we should have a discussion of council to go over regarding this as a policy and that any type of policy change should be discussed by council and possibly determined. Our Law Director isn't here yet, but there are a couple of things that I did want council to make sure that they were aware of. And one, we found in our mailboxes today, one dated Monday, April 13th of this year, regarding, and it was from Captain Tom Pyle, regarding the federal JAG grant. What's JAG stand for?
Justice Administration.
Thank you. And this was provided to council. In fact, on it, it says, Debbie, referring to the Clerk of Council, "It is a requirement of the grant that they get a copy of the application." And the application that was submitted, for those that would look under, I believe, the counterterrorism surveillance system, it was pointed out that with the grant funding, the department would be able to install the cameras at three key intersections in the downtown area, very near the parking garage where most of the late-night violent activities occur. And it goes on to mention some of the cost items on that. And so, council was made aware. And I think that's very important that, now, I will be one of the first to defend council members that they are given a lot of reading material. And it would be unreasonable to think that council members would get through all of the reading material that they are given. But this was not a lot. There was, you know, only about seven pages here, if I'm counting correctly. But as far as I'm, the way I would look at this at this point is that council was made aware of this and did take a vote on it. I believe it was a unanimous vote. I believe so. I don't remember anyone voting against it. Do you, Sherri? You were the sponsor.
I'm on.
Yeah. So with that on, yes?
I think that we mostly discussed, listen, I was mostly discussing the parking garage. I mean, it was a long discussion about the parking garage and hopefully reducing the amount of vandalism, that this could help. So I think that that was the emphasis of this and that people were aware of that and such, so.
Other comments? Can council members? I wish our Law Director was here to make the points he wished to make. Mayor Wild.
Again, part of this is really just a, not so much a policy thing, but a security aspect. I mean, you guys approved the grant. If I remember, the only other thing I remember about this conversation was there was some kind of conversation about adding cameras to East Elementary, which I thought was part of the discussion.
Yes, I remember that too.
Yes, that was the only one that, you know, bells went off in my head in terms of the possible problems of that, mostly because I don't think it was our schools requiring it. But other than that, the conversation, we've had a camera uptown for about a year and a half, I think, the one at the corner of intersection of Washington and Court. We added the other ones primarily for Halloween, but the same thing is, is to expand our surveillance when there's a problem. Part of the thing you're seeing is even on Halloween, I was uptown, 3 o'clock, and there was a report that there was a fight going on in front of Jackie O's. I'm standing at the corner of Wash, of Union and Court, and there's no fight going on at Jackie O's. I don't see anything. I'm looking down there. So the question is, you know, do you take the time to throw some cops down there, police down there, when there's nothing going on? I mean, a report is a report. Now, you know, again, you're looking at camera and you say, how do you identify a fight? I mean, that's, that becomes an issue there. Again, part of the thing is to augment the ability of our police, which I guess most people will say is understaffed, to actually assist in the uptown surveillance, so to speak, but also safety. I think one of the issues I had with some of the, some of the people during Halloween is actually they were not impressed with the compact fluorescent lights. They thought it was, in general, Court Street is too dim. The cameras cut through the haze or the darkness in one sense, but at the same time, if we talk about security and you want, don't want to go with cameras, you could say, let's increase the lighting. Then, of course, you fall into the, you know, lumens and, you know, light pollution area. Again, to my mind, it's a security thing that really, you know, you approved of along the way with the JAG grant. Admittedly, as I say, it's, a lot of things went into grant, but at the same time, this was one of the components.
I guess, one of the conversations that I had with a couple of members of council before coming in here is the expectation of privacy. And when I'm walking down Court Street, do I have an expectation of privacy? No. I really don't. I'm sorry.
I don't mean to interrupt, finish what you were going to say.
Yeah. But that isn't, and we'd love to have you come on up to the microphone and, well, I don't have a long point to make, but as soon as I'm done, we'd love to hear what you have to say too, because this was announced and we would like to have a lot of. But on Court Street, I think there are cameras coming from several different directions from the different banks. I believe the courthouse has, I was on a jury and I was, you become aware of some of the security systems that are in place over there, and they are substantial. So, you know, that include cameras, so.
But also many businesses. Point out, I was just looking at Brennan's. Brennan's has cameras. And where College Bookstore has cameras. So, you know, let's see, CVS has cameras. That I can think of right off the top. And I'm not terribly observant when it comes to cameras, but they're, you know, they're, they're pretty ubiquitous in many of the businesses now. And the expectation of privacy in a business is, you know, just as much as out on the street.
Yes. Please. We ask that you give your name and your address.
My name is Ellen Burns. I live at 3 and 1/2 Ohio Avenue in Athens. In terms of the expectation of privacy, I would like to speak to that to begin with. I think that, for one thing, Mayor, private businesses have a right to surveil the people who are going to be on their private premises. It's different when it's in a public space. If people are walking down the street, I'm concerned about the abuse of rights, even in terms of police abusing citizens' rights. You could be watching a general camera. I read a comment in the paper about, well, maybe people would like to see citizens walking down the street and see how the weather is out there. There is the potential for crime. If people know you're gone, they know you're downtown, they know you're not at home, your home may be broken into. There's, I wanted to talk to the Law Director, Patrick Lang, about the issue of, well, what kind of charges can you bring against somebody when you have indiscriminately surveilled them walking down the street? There are, there are, there's a term, a legal term called entrapment. There's issues of, are they, what, what can you do in terms of their person? And generally speaking, I think that conditioning citizenry to expect that anywhere they go, they may be watched, is very bad when the full picture is not being presented. And this gets into a personal issue. I'm illegally searched by government 24/7. Now, I'm going back to court again to try to win my Fourth Amendment rights to freedom from illegal search and seizure. I have been illegally searched by the Athens Police Department, I'm sure of that. And I think that the city needs to be aware, and the people in the city need to be aware, that governments are not going to always be upfront with the kinds of activities they're using to, in the name of preventing crime or terrorism. And there is a real danger of violating people's rights in that endeavor. I know, and I, I'm willing to swear to this, that people in close proximity to me cannot, cannot be reasonably assured that they're not going to be followed home, that their mind isn't going to be read, because I'm convinced that illegal search of my mind has occurred. There's all kinds of very dangerous repercussions to the social fabric from the use of surveillance cameras in the name of some kind of general public good that is nonspecific. To take a, to take the main street of your hometown and open it up to, well, is it just our police department or is it Interpol? Is the whole world going to be looking at our hometown? Who is going to be looking at us as we walk down the street? Who may want to know something more about us? Who may want to know if we're not home or where we're going? I think those are very legitimate questions. I'm sorry, Patrick Lang isn't here. To help elucidate concerning what Fourth Amendment law has already been established, but those are, those are very important issues that I think the city needs to really give some serious thought to when asked to purchase more surveillance equipment in the name of preventing crime. I just, I just don't, I think it's a waste of money, and worse than that, it's a very dangerous intrusion against people's right to be themselves and be at home in a place that isn't completely surveilled and surrounded by police. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Number five.
I'm wondering about, what I've gotten from people, questions asked, is what happens with, if there's film or images that are kept and how long they're kept and how they are stored and what the repercussions of that is for public records access and requests and all the procedures one has to go through since this is a, you know, publicly funded operation. I just, that's what I've gotten.
It's the, it's the Police Department's contention, and Law Director Lang could probably weigh on us at some point too. But the Police Department's contention is, is, let me, let me clarify maybe a misperception about the system. When you use the term surveillance, it denotes some kind of person sitting in front of computer screens like you might see in Las Vegas casinos or something, constantly monitoring video feeds. The Police Department doesn't do that. Our system is more of an available system should we need it. It's called on and used as needed. So, in the strictest sense of the term surveillance, it is not a surveillance system. It's simply a monitoring system. If we were to hypothetically speaking, get a, and it has happened actually, a complaint, a victim's car was vandalized or an accident occurred on Court Street of a hit-skip nature. Our officers have the ability to go back through the system and search the time and date. And if we're fortunate enough to have caught something on video, if the cameras are turned in the right direction and they see something that might be used as evidence, and they decide to extract the video from the system to use as evidence, then all of the rules of evidence then apply. The video is extracted usually to a disk. It can be extracted to a hard drive, but usually to a disk. And then, all the records or all the rules regarding evidence and at some point, public records, keep in mind that there are some exclusions to the public records all regarding evidence, all of those time limits kick in. So, and for, in regards to evidence, the time limits are at least as long as the statute of limitations. And usually, there's a point past that after a case has been adjudicated that it's, it remains as in the evidence room and that kind of thing. But typically, those, those video are extracted to CD and put in a case file and kept with the case and then used as evidence. Now, in regards to video that's on the system that's not being used as evidence, it's the Police Department's contention that those are not public records because none of that documents functions of the Police Department. So it's simply video of what occurred on Court Street, but not necessarily what the Police Department did on Court Street. Okay? So, I don't know what, what applications or laws would govern those, but we do have in our public retention schedule, a new entry for video surveillance that was approved over the summer that says we have to keep those video from the system that's considered public record for seven days, no less than seven days. We don't delete anything after seven days. The systems are based on a record-in, record-out kind of a situation, so there's finite amount of hard disk space on these computers that record the video. And as the, as the system runs out of disk recording space, it kicks out the oldest data to replace it with the newest data. So, once that threshold's met, then there are, every day, there is another day kicked out of the system. And it really depends on the camera and how much activity is on the camera as to how frequently that happens. But we have never gone in, since we put the system in over a year ago, we've never gone in and deleted anything. Some of the cameras keep data for 30 days because the recording is motion-activated. For instance, there's a room in our Police Department that a person might go into maybe three or four times a week. So that camera may have more than 30 days on it. But then there are also cameras that are activated virtually every minute, like the front lobby camera that people walk in and out of constantly. That may only have two weeks of data on it. Now, these particular cameras on Court Street are set up, all four cameras are on their own system. This particular computer it's on has the ability to hook up 32 cameras, so you can imagine it's got a sizable disk space. But we only have four cameras on it right now. And we set those cameras to record 24/7. They're not motion-activated, they just simply record. And I, we don't know, because they're so new, we don't know how long they will record before they start recording over data. But the public records also says seven days, so after seven days, we could potentially go in and free up disk space and delete those files, but we haven't yet. So, does that answer your question?
Member Coon.
This isn't going to be on the government channel. The general public is not going to be able to.
That's correct.
To see that. So, I know she was concerned about people seeing you on the street and going to rob your house, but they're not going to see that, are they?
That's correct.
The public is not going to see that.
That's correct. And by and large, the, the only people in the Police Department that are going to see it are the officers who receive complaints that something happened on Court Street and are investigating, and the communications officer, because that's where that feed is live at all times. And they'll only see it if they have the particular cameras selected. We have numerous cameras internal to the Police Department that are monitored. We have cameras in the parking garage that are monitored, and then we have these cameras here on Court Street. And they're on different matrices, for lack of a better term. So the COs actually have to pull the cameras up to look at them. And the more cameras you have, the smaller the resolution on the screen, so the more difficult time you have picking out anything. And also, these cameras have a little bit of limitation in regards to, like facial recognition and things like that. We would have to zoom in with these cameras in order to identify somebody. The cameras on Court Street have pre-presets, and after a period of time, they revert back to the preset unless overridden by the operator. So if somebody were to zoom in, say, we got a fight call at one of the bars, and we wanted some information going into the response, to be able to provide the officers, okay, you have a person in a white T-shirt and a person in a blue T-shirt fighting in front of the bar. They have, if the camera goes unchanged, it swings back to the panoramic view of Court Street. Okay? So that's what is typically on there, is a lot of that, just a lot of traffic and vague images and people walking.
Thank you.
And realize, of course, that, you know, I don't know if you've been in the dispatch office, they're pretty busy. They don't really, they're not really just watching TV. So, and again, I look at it as more like an investigative tool in that sense, because most of the stuff's not going to stop, stop something from happening at the time. It's off to the back, as Captain Pyle stated. You know, again, I don't see it as a, from my point of view, it's not a big deal because we have cameras, lots of cameras already. And I know this is really, we had cameras around Law Administration Building for many years, and those gave up the ghost, so now we just added some more. I know that's a concern. You know, part of the safety, you realize that we added cameras inside parts of City Hall so we can see what's going on too, because we have blind spots.
Member Butler, I'm sorry. Member Butler, if you'd like to ask your question first.
I can wait for their comment.
Go ahead.
I just kind of wanted to add on to what the mayor said. If you, if you take for instance, the event that happened in May on Palmer Street, we have no cameras in the area, no video surveillance, no video cameras. We didn't deploy that. Within 24 hours of that event happening, there were at least 20 videos on YouTube that were recorded and posted on the Internet. If the Police Department had that kind of ability to put cameras down there, you would have never seen one of our cameras posted on YouTube. That all would have been put into evidence and the rules of evidence would have governed the release of any of that video. So, there are a lot more cameras at any given time on the street with these cell phones than anything that I think the Police Department could establish, so I just wanted to point that out as an example.
Thank you. I also wanted to add that I have not received any emails or phone calls from any of the constituents on the West Side or people residing in the First Ward that have expressed any concerns or worries or fears, so I just wanted that to be known as well, that I have not received any fears or, thank you.
Member Golds.
It's clear this was done with, with good, honest intentions, but I, and I apologize for not catching it in the grant, that it was part of that grant. I think that if, if we had, that it probably would have been discussed at a council meeting before it had, they had been installed. And that's, that's our failure, I think. For me, the question is really consent of the residents, and that hasn't, we haven't gotten their consent to monitor them 24 hours a day in public places. And I think that unless we have that, I'm personally, I'm not comfortable with continuing with the surve, or monitoring of these cameras. And it's, you know, I think a government office, a Police Department or, or something like that, it has probably a different view of civil liberties and where you draw the line. And I think it's up to the community to decide the balance between, between what's acceptable and what's not. And I, personally, I'd like to see some way to have, to have consent of the residents of Athens for this to continue in the future. I'm not exactly sure what that would look like.
Member Sands.
I think consent is understood when council has discussions in public, and we probably should have had this discussion earlier for having it now. I'm like Councilmember Butler, I've not heard from anybody through any medium, including reading the paper, that they, they really have a problem with this, until I heard this lady speak this evening. And so, the consent is, the lack of, the lack of dissent seems to me to imply consent. Seems to me.
Just about made you Law Director.
Close, real close. Nice pair of eyes.
I want to say a couple of things. Privacy on public streets. When you ask about consent, I don't, I, it's just, it's already, you know, there that it's public, how you're behaving in public is subject to scrutiny. And I view it as a needed law enforcement tool. I intend to keep them up until some greater body than me takes them down.
Mr. Goldsberry has indicated he'd like to make a comment. This is a former service safety director of the City of Athens.
Long time ago.
Only a couple of weeks back. Welcome, Mr. Goldsberry.
Thank you. Just an anecdotal thing that I came across about six months ago, for whatever you think it's worth. I was driving down to Cincinnati and I decided to stop and fuel up at Jackson. So you turn off the right on that main street there, and I went about four or five blocks north and pulled into a gas station. And I happened to look up in the intersection, there's a camera up there. And so somebody else was gassing up, and I said, what's that camera for up there? I assumed they were a local person. And that person looked up and said, well, I don't know, I never noticed that before. And he said, I don't know what it is. And I said, do you have more of these? He said, I don't have any idea. Now, I was talking to somebody else in that same station there, and I said, what about that camera up there? What's that about? And he said, oh, we've got those cameras all over this town, he says. We've got lots of those cameras in intersections and around Jackson. And so, I don't know whether it grows from four to 40 or what happens, or whether they have found their way into residential areas in Jackson or not. I would suggest that maybe the PD and the Service Safety Director might have some conversation with Jackson and see about that, because it appears that some people, maybe several people, don't know a thing about it, and yet it appears also that there's a lot of them down there. And it may just kind of grow like Topsy, you know? They used to say when I was a kid, you know, add a few now and a few more later, next thing you know, the whole town's covered up with certain, well, monitoring cameras. Survey ones, I think that's play on words, no offense to the Police Department, but that, I think some of that kind of research might be helpful as council tries to make a decision about this, because if we end up with them in residential intersections, there might be a lot of unhappy people then, not just Court Street. Court Street's one thing. I know people won't even come near Court Street that live down in residential areas, you know? They tell me that, they wouldn't go up there for anything, so they don't really care until it hits them on May Avenue or somewhere perhaps, you know? Anyway, that's all I, just an anecdotal, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsberry.
I don't mean to blindside Tom here on this, but you probably do not remember a conversation you and I had in the conference room downstairs, probably about two years ago, when we were very frustrated over trying to eliminate graffiti. And I said to you, why can we not have monitoring cameras at the intersections of Court Street? Do you remember this?
No.
Okay. And what was kind of ironic, Tom was very reticent about doing it, saying that he felt that there would be concerns over the ACLU and others being, finding it objectionable. And I remember saying then, I don't think when you're in public, you have a right to an expectation of privacy. So, I just was wondering if you remembered us having that conversation.
I do, and the, to me, the, I think it was, we were talking about the, the camera systems that were self-enclosed, that nobody monitored, but they just recorded any motion. And then if they happened to catch motion, they could be set up to trigger an alert that would go out and say you're being recorded and that kind of thing. And the cost with those was one of the things that I was concerned about. But I was not very learned about video and, and public places. But I was not very learned about video and public places and the reasonable expectation of privacy and those kinds of things. But I remember that conversation, because it wasn't too long after that, the officer that really designed this system came to me and said, "What about this?" And I said, "Well, you know, I know there's interest in that out there, and I think it's a good idea as far as a deterrent, but we need to learn about it." So we went about learning about it and found out that, you know, we can do this, it's legal. And so we kind of grew the system from there. Initially, the system was designed simply to be a replacement for our antiquated security cameras in the police department. And then we had the idea to, you know, with all the graffiti going on in the parking garage, that...
Which has tremendously been reduced, by the way.
Yes, it has. Yes, it has. And then we got, you know, the thought popped up, well, what about Court Street? You know, a large part of our calls on any given Thursday, Friday, Saturday night happen on Court Street. A lot of our victims of assault come from Court Street, unfortunately. So we talked about that, and, you know, the system did grow from there. But there's money, when you talk about expanding the system to, out into the neighborhoods, there's money concerns. There are certainly privacy concerns at that point. The police department doesn't have any interest in putting up cameras on May Avenue, places like that in residential neighborhoods where the crime rates are low. But any high-crime area where people are more subject to being victims than they are to being surveilled, I guess is how you put it, that we would consider putting a camera up there. And, you know, and I think now that the technology's there and we have the in-house expertise, if people on the West Side, for instance, were complaining that graffiti was on the rise again, and asked, "Hey, can we do something down here?", that might be one of the first things we suggest, is let us put up a couple cameras tied into our system, and see if we can't deter some of this crime, or actually catch people in the act doing it.
For $700 on a trip to Costco, you can get 16 cameras and surround your home with them. You set up your, basically, your home as a website, and you're able to access it from any place that you are able to get web access. If I'm on vacation and I get an email alert on my iPhone to tell me that somebody is at my front door, and I press a few buttons on the iPhone and see literally it's somebody that shouldn't be there, it's my understanding that that $700 system, I'm able to call the police, and they would be able to access it if I give them the site number for that, and the police would be able to see what's going on in an empty home.
That's accurate, yeah. That's accurate, but I want to say that...
And I'm sure I scared a lot of people to...
Exactly.
...with that, but, I mean, that would be my own choice to do.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to be clear, our department specifically shut down worldwide web access on these systems. This is on a totally enclosed system that is separate from the city's wide area network. It has the ability to hook through the wide area network. For instance, on events like Halloween, we set up a very specific route to throughput the signal, so that we could access it and use it outside of our wide area network, specifically for Halloween. And then on the Monday after Halloween, that was immediately shut off again by the city's IT director, because it's a security issue. We don't want people to be able to access it to damage the files, to view the files, that kind of thing. I mean, it's very proprietary in that respect, so, yeah.
Member Golzner, do you have a hand?
Yeah. I just want to point out that, you know, I appreciate Mr. Goldsberry's comments, and Uptown is a residential area. It's a different kind of residential area, but we have a couple thousand students living uptown. So I would wonder how they feel being videotaped 24 hours a day, going in and out of their home. For them, their front doorstep is a lot different from most of ours, but it's the same idea. And it gets back to the consent issue. But I also want to bring up another point, which is that, you know, large events where there's the possibility for really destructive activities, the Palmer Fest, those types of things, I think that's a lot different, a totally different discussion to be had than looking at just continuous monitoring of public streets and public areas. And, you know, I guess following with what Mr. Goldsberry said a little bit, I think we need to determine when it is acceptable to have cameras out there that are put up by the city to monitor places. And Captain, you said that perhaps to deter graffiti, it'd be the possibility to put them up in certain places if citizens brought that forward. And that may be a very good use of them, but I think that we need to have that discussion in some form, so that we can gauge what's acceptable and what's not. And I'm not sure where we'll come down on that, but I think we need to have that, especially as they get cheaper and more available to tie into our system. Like, we need to have some sort of policy in place at some point in the future on these that we can look to and allows us not to pick certain individual cases, but just to say, "In this situation, it's acceptable, in this situation, it's not."
Mayor Wile.
Former Service Safety Director Goldsberry pointed out cameras in various neighborhoods. You're aware, of course, that Chillicothe had the Red Flex, the Red Flag system, where they had, I think I mentioned this last time, the ticketing of people going through your lights, going through red lights. This is not the same system we're talking about here. Obviously, the people spoke on that by ballot, if you wanted to address it that way. You know, again, I get those mailers all the time, saying, "Improve your, you know, your safety on your streets by doing that." Speeding as well, speeding in, talking to the mayor, speeding inside school zones. The West Side, of course, has been talking about graffiti problems, as well as trying to do a neighborhood watch. I think they really get taken aback by how much effort goes into a neighborhood watch. I know in terms of graffiti, there has been discussion of maybe we should get a video camera and watch some of the walls that normally get scored out. Being a regular citizen who can do that and say, you know, if you have that, which means running a camera every day until somebody shows up with a spray can, and then passing it along to police for graffiti purposes. There should be a private person doing it. Some people talk about vigilanteism on that side. Again, so there's aspects of it. Many years ago, I know we had cameras in the cars, which of course degraded with, I think vibration is what I heard kill the cameras in the police cars many years ago.
Among other things.
Yeah, okay. So there are other options. We do have, I think, the intersection of 56 and 682 has cameras, but that's just primarily for the traffic instead of loops.
Is that our camera?
Those are our cameras, but really, their sole purpose is to, it was a different technology. Director Stone was trying at the time, rather than the magnetic loops underneath your intersection, try a camera, so they count the cars and say, "It's time to change the light." And that's the extent of it. Realize if you're sitting on the monuments, you have no expectation of privacy, anybody in the world can see you. I would like to actually see more webcams in the city, just for tourism purposes. Again, short of wearing a burka and walking around, I think everybody's going to see who you are, one way or the other, if they identify you. I mean, right now, your names are out there, if we're worried about what would happen at home right now.
Oh.
You know?
They know where we are right now.
Yeah, I know you've got a vicious dog, though, so you're good.
Three of them.
Two of them, right?
Three.
Three, oh, no.
Yeah, moosey could, yeah, well, anyway.
But again, the expectation of privacy going down the street is one thing. I think my first experience with a webcam is somebody sent me a site to a bathroom, a public bathroom in Sweden, which I found very unusual. Why there'd be, why do you want to take a picture of a bathroom stall with the toilet paper? Because 90% of the time, a bathroom like that is empty, I suspect. You know, it didn't last long, it's like, you know, what the hell? And then it's like, this is weird.
Why did they think you would enjoy?
I think that at that point, somebody just shows me the world of the bizarre. But at the same time, you know, this is it, and this is literally 15 years ago, so the technology has been around for a long time. During Palmer Fest, if you could go and look at YouTube on some of the activities, you'll be amazed how many, the glow of how many cell phones were up there, you know, facing the fire. You know, basically, it just looks like a concert with Vic Lighters, as we used to know it, but now it's the cell phones that glow. I mean, literally, so there are lots of pictures being taken of an event of that nature, which of course was considered not terribly legal. So, you know, this is how we live in the 21st century. You know, the question is, how do we create policies for it, and what expectations we have of privacy? And as I say, short of, you know, there will come a time when you'll have camouflage suits, and you'll be able to walk around, nobody will know who you are. Or a burka, as I said, but at the same time, until then, it's going to be a little bit everything.
Not to drag it out too late, because we've already given it about 45 minutes, but, you know, as Court Street's sacred, but Walmart's parking lot in Walmart is not, you know, and the same thing on every one of the parking lots of all the big box stores on East State Street. I mean, they're all there, in tremendous numbers. So I'm beginning to wonder, what are we trying to do? Should we carve out Court Street and say, "Ye shall not film here?" So I don't know. The process to follow, I guess, at this point, if there is an interest, is to bring forward either a ordinance and see if you have a second, or develop a policy, I guess. Yes, Mr. Goldsberry?
I wanted just to quickly respond to the question of expectation of privacy. I think that a lot of citizens expect privacy wherever they happen to be moving. I spent 25 years in Tucson, Arizona. It's about 700,000 people in the metro area, and quite a number, a large number, of those folks that live there live under bridges, because they're homeless. Now, you've got a major highway or a street coming over the top of a bridge, and you've got walkways underneath the bridge that people can bicycle on and so forth. Down underneath those bridges and those dry washes, you'll find any number of people, homeless people, living down there. And I think it would be the last thing that the city of Tucson would ever think of, would be to put cameras underneath those bridges, to watch people who are progressing with their lives as best they know how. And I think that applies, that's an exaggerated example, but that would apply to an awful lot of people who are peacefully going about their business and expect privacy even in public places. And I think they respect it down there. It doesn't just exist underneath bridges, it exists in public parks and places like that also. And so I think there is an expectation of privacy, contrary to perhaps the belief that there is not one. Thank you.
May I speak to that also?
Sure.
Thank you.
I would just like to add that when you're talking about the expectation of privacy, a key word is reasonable. And cases are decided based on the specific facts that occurred at that time. When you have indiscriminate surveillance of civilians, private citizens, walking down the street, and I think you should consider the fact that some people may feel that that area isn't open to them, because the police department or some official may want to know what they're doing at that time, or somebody else may. Anytime you create that kind of information, you create also the danger that it may be abused. It may be abused in people's rights of freedom of association. What businesses of the police department, that somebody is walking down the street with somebody else? There's all kinds of issues that are raised when you create the documentation of daily life in that manner, and give it, and give your police power control over that information. So I would caution you, I agree with Mr. Goldsberry, people do have a right to conduct their business without officialdom breathing down their throats and intruding in ways that, just because the technology is there, I don't agree with the idea that we should adjust to it and just live with it, because there are very, very precious values that may be swept away, that we may not be able to preserve if we just do nothing when we can do something. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other comments anyone wishes to make? Member Golzner.
Just one short last thing that I'd like to mention, and that's that the character of Athens, for me, has always been a very warm, welcoming atmosphere and a very open community. And I think that we need to consider what impact this might have on the sense that people have of the community or of Uptown when they're here. Does it have an impact? And for some people, it will, and for others, it won't, but it's something that I think we should make sure we don't just push to the side.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you for everyone's input that you brought to this meeting tonight. Are there any miscellaneous items anyone wishes to bring up under committee of the hall? Yes, Member Butler.
Thank you, sir. I just would briefly like to mention that I did receive the official report from Mr. John Klein, who was the consultant that we brought into town to look at the Hebe sculpture. So I am in possession of the report, and I will then be meeting with my subcommittee, and then reporting to the Athens Municipal Arts Commission with the opinion pertaining to what might be done with the future of Hebe. And then they will then report to council and the mayor. So I just received that report, I believe it was Friday, via email. So I have not yet been successful in getting in touch with all of my subcommittee members, but just wanted to let everyone know that that's where we're at with that process.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else, any other miscellaneous items? Then on to the safety committee, committee chair, Member Kuhn.
Thank you, President Bias.
Thanks, Tom.
The first thing I wanted to talk about tonight was, well, you know that we've been trying to find a suitable location for a new fire station to replace the Columbus Road Station, to which we have spent quite a lot of money recently on structural repairs. And so, but we also need to figure out how to finance a new fire station. And something that might help us is a survey that Dr. Tom Daniels of Communication Studies, Scripps College of Communication, has agreed, has indicated to the mayor that he has agreed to have his class take on that project. And so it would help us to determine what the public is willing to do concerning financing a new fire station. The mayor has indicated to me that some other questions could be on that survey as well, not just fire department questions. But I think that's pretty exciting. Apparently, this survey has been done, a similar survey regarding other issues has been done on an annual basis, pretty much, I guess, in the past. And so we might have on this survey, would they be willing for us to have a bond to finance the new fire station? This would, it wouldn't go to everyone in the city, it would be random selection. Residents would receive the survey by mail, and students would receive the survey by email. And so there's going to be a meeting in December, and I just thought that was kind of exciting and wanted to share that with you. And did anyone else have anything to say on financing a new fire station? Mayor?
Again, this is a survey class that puts out a survey regularly on conditions of the city. They treat us as a client, it's been done before. I think it's probably New James's class rolled over. We've had various issues over the years, I think we've had almost, I forget, maybe a dozen of them, I don't even know how many predate my sitting here, I know that much. Part of the issue, of course, right now, is looking at a fire station. The discussion, of course, would be to how to fund it. That would be the major thrust I would like to put into this survey. You know, what would the population be willing to pay, what they envision of what would happen if they do get a fire station? Where to put it, everything like that, I know, I've had discussions with Paul Ogle about trying to look at the... trying to look at the GIS modeling for, in terms of a good location. Again, we're limited by, there's, you know, again, we're hoping that the FEMA grant comes around again, so we don't have to pay for all that, but it still requires somewhere in a 500-year flood, .2%, I think they call it now, flood level, has to be outside that. So there are limitations of location. I say .2% because they used to call 500 years, now they don't want to call it 500 years. Nobody thinks 500 years is critical, but if you say .2%,
You mean .02?
.02?
Yeah.
.02, yes. My math.
Because otherwise it would be more flood prone than .01.
1, yes. True.
.002 maybe even.
Well, as I said, this is, this will be a fall, a winter quarter class, and I'll probably put some pressure on at least meeting with the students and voicing what we'd like to see on the survey. If there's other issues that need to be put forward to, let's think about that as well. I know there's always hodgepodge of things we could add on to it, but just if we're going to be searching for capital improvements, maybe we have to talk to the voters, at least to the, get a feel for what's out there. That's really all I'll cover on that.
Okay, thank you. Member Bean?
I was wondering, this is under Chris Nysley's area, but maybe you could explore the question of some commitment of the public to the bus system as well?
Okay, yes.
And that would mean?
Funding for the bus system.
Right, at least partial, so we could potentially expand into the residential areas.
I know you met with Chris and Charlene concerning the cost of our bus system. And as you, the capital improvements, capital plans for the next four years show us increasing a wedge of how much we have to spend each time. I'm aware of the fact that we are very, money is very tight.
I know, the mayor always talks about the bus system, but I was really surprised to learn that we are probably spending much more money on it than I once understood. I mean, because we don't take out our administration. And the, and it's certainly something I want to keep, but I think if we're going to expand it, we're going to have to ask for at least partial funding from the citizens, perhaps, if that works.
I'd point out, I'm just trying to maintain it right now. Expansion is, is like when, we're hunkered down right now if you start talking about the 2010 budget.
Oh, I agree. And that's exactly why I thought we need to start asking the citizens if they would be interested, or actually trying to persuade them if they'd be able to do this. Not a big amount, but just enough to offset some of the charges because one thing that I never realized, you know, talk about the JAG grant, we were moving money out of streets for the last three or four years to offset the gap between the part of the money that came from the state. I mean, the state funds us this much, and there's about $120,000 gap, and I always thought it was about $40,000. So I'll never be innocent again, and now I want to see some way to get that money back. About a ton. Actually Debbie produced the document, thank you Debbie. Were you shocked? I shouldn't ask her that, she's not supposed to be shocked.
Debbie is an easily shocked.
Okay. The next thing that I have would be the SAFER grant for the fire department. And it's an annual grant, and do we want to apply for it? And if we do, the deadline is Friday, December 18th. This is a grant, SAFER stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Program. It's a Department of Homeland Security FEMA grant for hiring new firefighters or rehiring laid off firefighters. There are no salary limits, no cost share. It would be for two years, and for new hires, we would have to commit to retain the firefighters for one full year after the two-year period. But it could pay 100% of the actual salary and benefits costs of newly hired firefighters. And do we want to do it?
So we would be making a commitment after two years?
For one year.
We would have to?
Keep those?
Find the funding and keep them for another year?
For one more year, yes. But there's?
A small commitment.
No. But there's no, there's no match for this, for 2009, for this grant.
For the first two years.
For the first two years, that's right.
Realize, of course, that we have a vacancy in the captain's level right now, which means everybody's, there's going to be a captain's testing, which means somebody, a lieutenant's going to bump up, which means somebody in the firefight is going to bump up. Conversation I had with Chief Trox earlier is that there's the potential of at least, possibly four different firefighters who are ready to retire. So conceptually, you could have a situation where we'd be knocking down a number of firefighters. This would augment us for at least two years to make a transition if need be. We would commit to them. Go ahead, Claire.
My question was for whomever. This would, this grant would be granted in 2010? Is that?
It's called the 2009 grant. Do you know when it would actually begin if we?
I assume it starts in 2010.
So we'd be looking at?
It's like COPS Fest for firefighters.
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking about, right? But we'd have 2010?
11.
And 11.
And then we would pay, I guess, in 12. But we're going, it sounds like we're going to have to be paying anyway.
Well, we may have, we already have, we have a vacancy.
Right, at this time.
Right.
We do.
And so that would, that could be used to cover that slot?
All new hires, or even rehiring laid off, which we, of course, doesn't apply to us.
Yet.
Yet, right. But you can even use this grant to rehire laid off firefighters. So I don't think it would be a problem filling the vacancy that we have now through this grant.
Again, that vacancy is yet to actually, the captain's position's vacant, so it's going to take a while.
They'll all settle out.
Yeah. In the meantime, we could actually start, and again, it's like the police and the fire, both take a long time to hire through. So even if we were to get this, I don't know the time date, I looked at it, I don't see an exact.
She said December 2.
That's the deadline.
The deadline for application, whether it's a fiscal year 2009 or 2010.
Could you clarify that it would be useful for a lieutenant or level higher? And if it's already in the staffing ordinance, would we be, or would we actually add a firefighter to the staffing ordinance in addition to what we have? I think that's an important question at this point in time. I don't see the state looking very good in the future, so if we could offset that, it would be fabulous, but I've not seen fabulous very much lately.
Okay.
I mean, so clarify, there are two parts there. The one is, if it's in the staffing ordinance, it's not funded. Is this a viable option? And if lieutenant level, that's a separate question.
Well, when you say lieutenant level?
You don't want me to say that?
Well, no, what will occur, there's a captain vacancy.
Right.
So lieutenants will test for captain, and then that'll leave a lieutenant vacancy, or firefighters will test.
Are we going to automatically?
But we would be hiring in at the firefighter.
We're automatically going to do that no matter what? Or is this a part, if we get the grant, it would go that way?
The grant is specifically to firefighters.
Okay. So, but earlier, I thought you said that we may take a bye on that.
On lieutenant position?
Yes.
Well, you're the ones with the firing freeze, of course, we'd have to change the staffing levels to that, and I imagine we'd probably have to deal with the union lieutenant union as well.
Well, of course, we would, you know, I don't.
So there's the row of ifs. We could address it. As I say, first of all, it's going to take at least two or three months to get the captain's test.
First, we have to get it, right?
The grant, yes.
We didn't get COPS Fest last time.
No.
Realize, it's like OPERS, which you're aware of too, is that the conditions for the fires, fires pension system is a changing target too. And as you know, from the public employment retirement system, there are many people opting out before that sands shifts. So I've, there could be, it's a very good possibility that we will have retirements in the next two years.
Two years, okay. Member Butler? Talk to somebody who's retired recently before you do anything.
What do you mean?
I'm just offering free advice, worth what I, what I paid for.
I'm not a fireman, I wasn't.
No, I'm talking about the state systems and the rest of it. Talk to someone who's retired recently. Member Butler?
Thank you, Member Coon. I wanted to answer your question, which was that I would offer support for our pursuit of this program. I think that in considering fiduciary responsibility of council and dealing with the taxpayers' money, I also think it's imperative to consider that it's, I don't want to imagine putting a price on someone's life or the safety of a community. So I do support this pursuit and feel that it sounds viable. I would benefit, as the rest of us, from more information pertaining to it, but in theory, at the moment, I do support it.
Okay. Anybody else? I wanted to let you know, we had talked about, some of us had mentioned touring the fire stations, both of them, Richland Avenue and the main station on Columbus Road. And so I made a phone call, and we are on the calendar to do that right now for January 9th, Saturday, January 9th, at 9 o'clock.
So this will be all council members and the public?
And.
You can come too.
And I hope you do. And President Bias had mentioned that it would be a good idea to perhaps tour other city facilities. Should we try to do that the same morning?
No.
Paul, how would you feel about, you don't want to do it the same day?
What other facilities would you like to tour?
Well, I'd like, years ago, I got taken on a tour of both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant.
I can probably get that arranged if you?
And the garage. So.
January, when is this now? 9?
January 9 to 3, I guess it'll be.
Yeah.
We could stop for lunch someplace.
So, okay, the question is, do you want us to comment to your bus for this?
I have a catered lunch at the wastewater treatment.
I think, I personally think that would be a really good idea. Because there could be limited parking at the fire station.
We'll put something together for January 9, 9 to 3, City Hall, I assume we meet. Okay, let's discuss this further. We still have a whole month and a half to decide.
That's true, we do.
And then make an itinerary of what you want to cover, whether it's the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, the armory, whatever you're thinking is your favorite place.
And just a comment that such field trips are always open to the public.
Yes.
It's a core.
Regular meeting of councils, so everybody is welcome.
Yes.
Should make the government channel bring some of their new equipment along.
They might, early in there.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, under miscellaneous?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge, I heard on the news, I believe on NPR radio, I was listening to a brief story in which they were addressing the police department's training titled CIT, which is crisis intervention training, and I wanted to applaud our city government for pursuing that, offering it. And my understanding and listen to the story on the radio was that it's to help the police officers in dealing with community members who may be struggling with mental health illness and their professional capacities as a police department. So I applaud that as a professional who works in the field of addictions and mental health, I think it's extremely beneficial. I just wanted to say thank you again for our administration and supporting those endeavors.
This has been going on for quite a few years, actually. I know reserve officer Dave Malawista is one of the major instructors for this. And actually, it goes past our city limits. If you believe, somebody who you believe, I think most of our offices, in fact, all our offices have been trained at this point. I know that I met the, I think he's deputy or marshal for Albany, who's also CIT trained. And so therefore, we have quite a few peripheral villages and cities that are also being trained with us along the way. So it's actually branched out to quite a, quite a distance within the southeast Ohio. And I think it's a good thing, because at that point, you have a situation where they can deal with issues that aren't just, you know, related to crime.
Right.
And interpret it correctly.
Right. Our first responders are dealing with much more than what we envision in the past as typical day of work. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? The safety committee meeting is over then.
Finance personnel? We're going to, we need to talk further about the budget for next year. We have had some preliminary discussions. The auditor spoke to us, our last committee meeting. And I know the mayor has been working on some issues, and I'm not sure whether he's ready to report or?
Not close, but I'm trying. Again, I'm trying to punch in the numbers, I've got most of departments, I think I still have maybe two departments to get information from.
And tell us, the numbers you're punching in for different departments deal with supplies, et cetera?
Yeah, TC 200s all the way to 600, though there isn't a lot in 600. I've been plugging in a lot of the capital because the request was, give us your capital list lists, but looking at the budget, especially the general funds, it will be tough to keep those in the list. You know, whether it's extra cruises or another vehicle for the fire department, I mean, car. Again, I don't have all the numbers ready, but at the same time, it doesn't look great. You know, I keep looking at it, trying to back off. Some of the numbers I got from the TC 100s, of course, they cover the full-time positions, which have gone up to the union as well as the non-union pay scale that was, is being instituted by council. My concern, of course, is looking adding up to staffing of what we do historically for part-timers and interns and seasonal. They actually add a little bit more to the mix than I anticipated. So I'm looking, I'm looking at this stuff, trying to figure out how to make it work. Kathy's been helping me off and on, I shoot emails to her and Ray quite regularly on issues of this nature. We'll be ready soon. And again, we know it will change flux all year long. Want to add anything, Kathy, or?
I don't think so. I think we got, the personnel, of course, is always a huge, important part of any budget, and that has been worked out, given you information on that, so put that in, and just have to work with what's left. And as we get to the end of November here, in the next week or so, I talked to Jim about this today, then we'll really be able to look at where we are and what we might need for the end of the year, and then what we'll have left for next year. We, we really, can I go ahead and talk about this?
Please, thanks.
That we talked about? Well, I really want to look at, we have three payrolls in December. As you recall, we had to add money for payroll for this year, 27 pays. And when we did that months ago, there were contracts and raises that hadn't been in place. And so Ray and I were just talking about that, that we want to make sure that we have enough money in there, in those 100s, transaction class 100s, to make payroll through the end of the year, because, as I said, those figures might not reflect quite everything with the new contracts that happened in the fall. So I might be coming to you, you know, in December with some appropriations for payroll. Hopefully not, and it shouldn't be much, but just a little heads up. I don't know that we'll have that by next week, I guess, I'm not even sure you're going to meet on Monday anyway. So if you want to have a committee meeting to discuss it before it gets into an ordinance, then, you know, that might need to happen right before a regular meeting or the special session. I guess, I assume you're still going to do three, three meetings in a row in December?
We haven't seen the budget yet. Don't assume anything.
Look, we are planning on, right, we are planning, certainly we'll have at least one special session.
Are we talking 20,000, 50,000, 100,000? Are we talking 10,000 here?
Oh, I'd say 10 or less, yeah.
Oh, so then we can just, can we just put that up? Like we have overtime, Ray wrote a note about overtime in some budgets.
Well, yeah, that's the other thing, overtime, and, you know, some of those that are kind of unknowns until this point in the year.
Would anybody object if we just started an ordinance a week, in two weeks from today with the adjustments that the auditor's asking for? For 10,000, I mean, 12,000? If it gets up to?
And as I told Jim, as soon as we have figures, I'm happy to, typically, we provide Nancy and Jim and the mayor and sort of safety director any information that we might need for appropriations, but I'm happy to send that to everyone on council as a little more of a heads up ahead of time, but, you know.
They're happy with what they have.
Let you all know where we are, what we need.
Which we would, which we would expect probably next week sometime. This week, obviously, there's holidays and holiday events occurring, and the auditor's office just is not sure that they can pull it all together by Monday, but that week to follow, and then we can bring forth the first reading of an ordinance.
Right now, as I told Jim this afternoon too, we're looking at other accounts, not just the payroll, and we have some small appropriations that we need, and one of them did go out to everyone. And one of them did go out to everyone from Ray for unemployment benefits, which is kind of an unknown. I don't know if we need to explain that, but when we lay somebody off, they might go on unemployment if they get a job right away and then don't keep that job and go back on unemployment. We still have an obligation, and so we have a couple people that have been kind of off and on in two departments, and, you know, we're talking 13, almost $14,000. It's not huge. And in the medical, Internal Service Fund, about $16,000 we need additionally. So, right now, we're going through, you know, all our pages and pages of expense lines to make sure we have enough money to pay other bills, and we just really haven't looked at payroll yet. So, there might be some other little ones as far as that goes, too.
So, you're talking about 30 to 35,000 when we add all the different pieces together, right?
Yeah. Well, these are already, have been put out there. You have these--
Right. I'm not complaining. I just want to make sure everybody--
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From our carryover, that's going to be, it's not as bad as street lights, but there.
Right. Yeah. No, I don't expect it to be huge amounts, but I guess, at this point, I'm not really sure. I can't commit to an amount, because we haven't really looked at it. We think we did a pretty good job projecting, you know, months ago, but you just never know as far as overtime and different things that happen.
30,000 plus or minus 10. Does anybody have an objection to us just reading it next time? Those three areas? I mean, we have no choice. We have to-- Got a solution.
This is, again, we're talking, what Nancy and I are talking about is the 2010 budget, which the carryover depends on, on issues that the auditor's talking about in 2009. And so, there's still some uncertainty there. But we'll, I asked her to email everybody as soon as she knows, again, sometime next week. So, we will plan to have, our regular meeting is December 7th, and I'm going to ask that we have a committee meeting at 7:00 beforehand to discuss those issues, and then we'll-- Go ahead. Okay. Any other questions now, or anybody? We're still waiting for input--
Good job.
And we'll put it together. And I think the first, first meeting in December is what we talked about earlier for first reading, and we'll go ahead. I think the auditor covered the miscellaneous, the email we got about the overtime. And is there any other miscellaneous?
Health insurance.
I'm sorry?
Health insurance. The health line, that's the insurance line, yeah?
Right.
There are about three or four out there. With luck, Debbie will have more corral by then.
And we did, you had asked for prescription information on where we are on that. We started looking at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Talk about unknowns. So, I read the Columbus paper, and it said that they just stopped, they didn't solve the problem in the State Senate, so, you know, it seems to me that we may be struggling a little bit unless something happens, and it didn't seem like anything was going to happen. It was pretty amazing to read. Even the Columbus Dispatch was upset, which is something. All right. With that little commentary, I'm going to start on utilities, and I met with Andy, as did Chris, and Chris isn't here. So, first thing on my list is what we sometimes call a housekeeping ordinance. Not any house I keep looks like this, but salt for streets, $65,000, needs to be appropriated, and we need to, another housekeeping ordinance, 228 for water softening, salt, fluoride, caustic soda, chlorine. And it'll be divided along the same basis as water, sewer, and perhaps even garbage, but water, sewer, and that'll be up for first reading unless somebody has an objection. We haven't heard anything about well cleaning, but I'm assuming Andy will pick up on that fairly quickly. That's the other typical thing.
This is for next year.
Yeah. That's what we're doing.
Nancy, what was that second figure, the 200?
228. Is that a startling amount?
228,000.
Water softening salt, we call, I call them reagents generally, fluoride, caustic soda, and chlorine for. And I think there's one in there for recreation. I wrote garbage down as I was getting ready, but I realized it should be recreation for the pool.
Okay. Thank you.
So, they'll divide it up. Debbie will divide it up and come back. So, that'll be an ordinance out for first reading.
I think I have some of the breakdowns for each of those, and I've got numbers from the recreation for the chlorine and the chemical--
Yeah, we were just going to use what we have last year, because they didn't specify, but if you want to tell--
As far as I know, they haven't changed that much.
Okay, because we've been doing it for a while.
I think they added a couple thousand in one case.
Okay. Issue two, money funds for the paving of Jeff Hill. Chris will talk about that in greater detail later on, but water and sewer will be repairing alongside the paving of Jeff Hill. So, there, we'll be putting out an ordinance for 20,000 from water and sewer for that, and if there are no problems with that, those are repairs, too. Andy's decision was to--
Yeah, this whole--
Yeah, the whole Jeff Hill thing, there were water problems we knew about before, and there were sewer lines, and those will be done simultaneously with the street rebuild, I guess it is, since it's down to dirt and so on.
Actually, that is a street rebuild, but you're right, it's water and sewer, the main component.
Water and sewer will be contributing, as will streets. Chris will talk about streets later on. Okay? All right. Now, just going to, water, water and the water fund. It's pretty neat to deal with Andy. He gets right on it and talks about what he wants. One of the things he said that made me pretty happy, since I walk this street quite a bit, Joneswood Riverview Terrace line replacement and then paving, he's talking about quite a bit of money going into that. I think the street's been slipping. I frequently call either Columbia Gas or the city and talk about whatever line happens to be leaking at that point in time. But that's one he has on the agenda, so you can expect that later on. This is super, to have such information in advance. What he's talking about is actually having a public-private arrangement where they'll do trenching with an outside vendor, and then we'll do some of the work ourselves. And that's pretty neat, so the price will be around 200,000. But we're not ready for an ordinance on that.
That's for next year.
Yeah, well, this is all next year. This is what, I'm trying to be proactive here. Early in the 1980s, EPA required, we used to just sort of let the water from the water softening at the water treatment plant just go out all at once every time at the end of the cycle. And the EPA made us build a great big facility, which I guess we'll see on the 9th of January, a great big holder, a big basin that's kind of rusty looking, although it's cement, that holds the backwash. And Andy is looking for $150,000 to rehab the Bryan Lagoon. Now, it cost, I think it was one of the first things I did on council, now there's a hinge right there, a half a million to do it back then, and we've since paid for it. So, he's, I would imagine to replace it, if we would want to, it would be much more money, maybe 1.5 million. So, this is a good deal. We're going to get it rehabbed. He said the money was firm on that one, the Bryan Lagoon rehab. And he also wants $40,000 in miscellaneous plant appurtenances that have to be done in the water treatment plant, and that's next year's water activities. Sewer, again, a pleasure to deal, to talk with him. Increase line, he wants more money to buy sewer piping. I'm all in favor of that, so we're going to increase that line. I hope the mayor does this for 25,000. The Mill Street sewer, we've talked about before, and we will have an ordinance up, which will put forward from the debt fund. We're going to transfer it over or use the money, because we're going to be waiting for the big expense to come through in the following year. We promised to use the CDVG formula money to redo the sewer on Mill Street, and there's a shortfall of about 100,000 needed, which we will use our, some of our debt funds and $35,000 for engineering. So, that'll be coming out, too. That's part of his, his proposal for next year. So, it's sort of a framework, you can see what will be happening. Pretty neat. The other, the other final thing is that we talked a lot, and again, everybody talked about what was in the paper this morning, and the New York Times this morning, there was a talk about Newport, Rhode Island, which had gotten stimulus money to stop putting sewage into the ocean where they're having the tourists come and swim. And so, we don't have that problem, but we do have excessive amounts of water from some places coming in to our sewer lines, because we used, in the past, we had clay pipe in there, places between where stormwater gets into the sewer water, and so we're treating stormwater. And we don't have the combined sewer problem. We had a few combined areas, but they're gone. But that's something that he said he'd be working on. I asked him to give me about a five-year plan for that, to get rid of the I and I, because then future development will be easier, because we won't be treating all this excessive water that's going into the line. So, and I also think it's going to be part of the, of the Paragon Precision, the company that's coming to help us save--
Perfection.
Perfection. It's a P.
They're just one of the companies.
Yeah, one of the, and so, we will see that. But we did have, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it, despite it being Gaga. But one of the things that we see that now is that 1983, we did probably when Phil Goldsbury was Service Safety Director, the SSES study, and when Paula took over, I took the book I had for a long time down and put it on her desk and said, get, please, let's do this. If I had $25 for every time I said I and I in council, I'd have enough to go to Bermuda for the parade with all of my family. So, and now I think he's really serious about doing it. Yay! So, here we are. I'm sure something will go wrong, but there, that's kind of the proposal. So, get it in your head where, where, right now, we think we'll be working. We're talking about Joneswood, but we also have the Rotary going on, which is going to put water, or I mean, water is going to put traffic on certain bridges and then, for the rush minute. And then another place will be Mill Street, and you can see how, and then, of course, at the plant itself. There's going to be some, it'll be a busy time, and we know we can't do too many projects, because it's just impossible in a town like this, doesn't that mean? So, that's kind of the overview of what's coming on, and I hope Debbie will probably be doing the Mill Street sewer for 2010, if you will. Okay? Debbie, get it ready for next time, please.
She has trouble, right?
Yeah. She's going to do it. Okay. That's it on the utilities. Chris?
Chris show.
Oh, planning and development?
No. Oh, thank you.
We talked about each Chris here. Chris Butler is actually going to talk about the, he has taken the lead on the gardening and domestic animals. Propose zoning changes?
Thank you, Member Paul. I just wanted to briefly acknowledge and announce that there will be a public hearing December 7th at 7:00 PM--
Take caution.
--in which they'll review and discuss the zoning code amendment possibility, which the Planning Commission made a recommendation to change, and that was 23.04.01, protein and gardening and domestic animals. I think for the sake of time and simplicity, there's not a whole lot more to say than that, and we'll follow through after that.
Mr. Butler, do you expect this to be contentious?
No.
I, I don't. I think it was, the mayor was present, and perhaps the City Service Safety Director was present at the Planning Commission's meeting. I think it was unanimous vote. Is that correct?
It does, but we have had an issue identified. If we do not define domestic animals, and that's what I was busy doing, running back and forth, and they were helping me back there in the tech room on miriamwebster.com or what have you. Domestic animals can be any of the various animals, as in horse or sheep, domesticated so as to live and breed and attain condition. Or another definition was an animal, as the horse or cat, that has been tamed and kept by humans, as a work animal, food source, or pet. The concern is from the citizen being, of course, if this, if it's not defined, and there's a lot out there, people, Vietnamese pot-bellied pigs, there are ferrets, there are snakes, there are birds, there are--
Milk cows.
Cats, cats.
Chickens is the problem.
Cats and dogs.
Milk cows.
So, it's, all right. It's milking. So, I'm not sure--
I'll call enough, hey?
I'm making you aware that since we did not define it, this, and that this could indeed open itself up to something greater than what we thought in terms of gardening and--
I guess I just assumed the Planning Commission had worked all that out.
Sorry.
But there's no definition. Yeah. However, we can add, as council, we can add an application to the ordinance, so, as long as we have--
Good luck with that.
What is right now legal in Athens? That would be nice. I mean, are ferrets--
Well, unfortunately--
Is ferrets legal in--
There's no--
That's our, ferrets are indoor animals.
As far as I could tell, domestic animals are not a permitted use unless it's conditionally permitted. So, when we discovered that, that's why we added the domestic animal part. We're all in violation, most of us, to have cats and dogs.
Right. I mean, this is an issue that--
You just said you're free.
It would be interesting to know what is legal in Ohio, because I, I mean, like, I know in California, certain things are absolutely not legal, and what takes precedence. Are we talking about dangerous animals instead of chickens? You know, like--
Chickens.
Cobras or things like that? I mean, I think that there are probably state laws going on there, aren't there?
I mean, this would be, so--
There's no domestic animal, there's no domestic animal thing in there?
No definition, and it's, they're not a, it's a conditionally permitted use, meaning we would have gotten to the VZA to have a dog or a cat.
Well, I know, it's totally bogus. Right. We need to--
So, we did vet this all the way through clearly, I guess, Ken, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Part of the thing is, what you're looking at is amending the 2304.01, which is R1 zones. And if you look at the section B on that, it basically permitted accessory uses, accessory uses building, house structures, customer incidentals, a force that committed and conditioned business, permitted uses, et cetera, et cetera. Let's see. Any conduct of any business, trade, industry, or private way of walk giving access to such activity, or any sign other than authorized here, and not including boarding of animals, keeping a fowl, and animals, except in building at least 100 feet from every lot line. This is still in place. So, in other words, if you're talking about pot-bellied pigs, unless just they're in your house--
I'm not talking about--
They're probably not allowed. If ferrets, I think most people keep ferrets in their house. Chicken coops are, this is where the chicken coop part comes in, the urban chickens come in, because again, we're still requiring 100 foot from every lot line for this type of activity.
If you build, if you're dealing with a permanent structure, like a hen house--
Well, that's a good question, whereas you're talking about building. What is a building at that point? I think any structure that's within 100 feet considered, you know, you could move around your accessory structures all you want, and that, that probably is still a building.
Well, I guess, perhaps a hen house on wheels would be different.
Perhaps I should enforce this and see what happens. I'll have to check that out. Another job of Mr. Paskey. But actually, we added--
Start with litter.
What?
You can start with litter.
He can start with litter. I told him that, too.
I'd be much more excited about litter than busting hen houses.
Well, in, in all fairness, the original intent of bringing this issue to council and then committee meeting, and then sending it to the Planning Commission, was gardening. That was the specific focus and interest, and that was my sincere intent. I wasn't prepared to discuss or tackle the other issue, but it's, it's a reality.
And I suppose you could separate that, just address the gardening right now while we do some research on the animals.
I think that might be a good idea.
Okay.
We'll have your public hearing, where you get your votes.
Yeah. If you have the votes, it's already been scheduled, you should go.
If you have your votes, then you can change it.
Thank you. I don't have any other comments or any other miscellaneous? I don't know. Chris?
Yeah, there's no miscellaneous.
Nothing we're going to do tonight, right?